In kind.
Yeah.
So moved.
So in kind, meaning will be exactly the way it is, except better.
Except brand new. Do you want to see the drawings?
Feet higher, not seven feet wider, not...
It's literally identical. I have the drawings if you want to pass these down, Peter, but I'll take that motion back.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we, I received an email inviting one or all of the Board of Selectmen to attend the September 20th meeting for the Manchester Essex Rotary Club, which starts at 6:30 PM. It's going to be held here, third floor of the Essex Town Hall Auditorium, and they would like a representative there to talk about like current issues, any other information we want to give. Typically, when I do these, I usually take our town administrator's report from our prior meeting and just review the last couple or that one if there's a lot of information in there. That's usually the update I give.
Sure.
I don't know. I wanted to put it on the agenda to give everybody an opportunity. I tend to take these, but I'm more than happy to share or go with someone if somebody wants to do it.
I think I am out of the country then. I don't know when I come back, but so I don't think I'll be around anyway.
It doesn't need to be posted because it's an attendance at a social gathering?
Mm-hmm. Elva, are you interested on September 20th, which is 6:30 up here on the third floor?
It's possible.
Okay.
So if I'm back, I can go without any problem, yeah?
Yep. And I have it in my schedule, so I'm planning on going, but if somebody wants to join me, I'm happy to do that, and then we can all bring the town administrator's report to present it.
Should have just Brendan do it.
Well, I'm gonna come.
He's gonna be there, yeah. We received... The PNS were gonna hold until after executive session. We received a letter from resident Diana Gersh regarding the possible scheduling of a townwide cleanup in the fall of road sides and neighborhoods. So, did everybody see that email?
Yep.
Recommending that we do. So she had several different points of interest, which were that we could offer this to high school students for community service hours. We, she was hoping that we could advertise it on the town homes, homepage. Some of her recommendations include: Could Essex donate the official town trash bags for disposal? Would the Essex DPW be amenable to picking up the trash bags they've left in designated areas? Would we be willing to advertise on the town website? And they would be looking to advertise on Facebook and save Essex landscape newsletters. Town voting for cleaning up locations, I'm not sure that we would have the ability to do that. Where volunteers can go to sign up. And could we incorporate local schools, for instance, high schoolers looking to receive community service credits. So these were all the things that were brought to us. I mean, naturally, any sort of a cleanup initiative is always welcomed. I just don't know.
So can I just add a couple of things?
Sure.
So when I had done this with the Lions, it was very important that we, if we used students, that we had made sure that we had some type of orange vest and security and blah, 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 especially if we were on state highways.
Is there liability coverage?
We have full liability coverage for volunteers.
Yeah.
So the only things that I thought off the top of my head was whether or not they should co-sponsor. She should try and co-sponsor with, say, either the Essex Lions or the Essex, Manchester Essex Rotary, because that way you broaden who sees it and also...
And they could handle the management and the signups and all that.
Right. The other thing I thought about is whether even to do it on a conjunction with the Clam Fest, so that it brings everybody back downtown when it's all done for a celebration.
That's a great idea, and that way we could probably co-sponsor with Lions Rotary and the Greater Cape Van Chamber Commerce.
Did they have a date that they wanted to do it? No.
She did not mention a date. She just said the fall.
That's why when she said fall, like, the first thing I thought is Clam Fest isn't the fall.
That's a great idea. As far as the town donating trash bags...
I don't think there's a need to.
There wouldn't be a need to. The DPW would pick up, and anything that goes to the transfer station in a town truck does not require trash bags. So as long as we could talk to the DPW commissioners and get them on board, I think this wouldn't be a problem. Some of these things would be left up to the person suggesting that we do this. I mean, obviously, I think we're all happy to support it and get involved, but I think they will need to take the initiative to execute it. So, do you want to get back to her with the recommendations of Lions Rotary or Chamber and that the town trucks? I can talk to the commissioners.
Yep, I will.
Okay. It is 6:06. Chief Francis, if you'd like to join us at the microphone. We have a 6:05 appointment with Police Chief Paul Francis, and he, it says Police Chief Paul Francis and Part-Time Police Officer Megan Watson to discuss her possible promotion to the position of full-time police officer contingent upon her satisfaction of full-time police academy training requirements and any other requirements of the police department. Chief Francis?
Okay, so, excuse me, I'm here before the board tonight to recommend Megan for an open, full-time position. Let me just read a little statement to you. Megan Watson is 25, is 25 years of age and currently resides in the city of Gloucester. She's a graduate of the Rockport High School Class of 2016. She's a 2020 graduate of the Municipal Police Training Committee's Massachusetts Law Enforcement Training Association, MELEDA, Basic Reserve Officer Academy, and attended the Criminal Justice Program at North Shore Community College. Megan has been working as a reserve police officer for the, for the town of Essex since October of 2020, and though she had minimal experience when she came to the department, she came with a working knowledge of small-town, of a small-town police department, having gained that experience as a dispatcher for the town of Rockport Police Department. Megan also has experience working in the customer service area with the general public in both the private sector and with youth sports programs. She took her work with the area youth a step further from September of 2017 through September of 2018 while working with a profoundly disabled child well-employed with Northeast Arc. I have watched Megan grow as an officer, and she has a genuine desire to be a police officer and has proven herself to be an asset to the department. I believe that Megan has shown herself to be a valued member of the Essex Police Department, and she works very well with all her peers. By all accounts, Megan did very well in the recent full-time job process, and she would be a welcome addition to the full-time roster. I respectfully request your support in appointing Megan Watson to the position of full-time police officer contingent upon successfully meeting the requirements of the Board of Selectmen in the town of Essex Police Department.
Thank you, Chief Francis. Does the board have any questions for Chief Francis? Any questions for Police Officer Watson? No. So, it goes without saying, Megan, I've told you so many times, I'm proud of you. I'm excited for you. I couldn't be more thrilled. This is a milestone here in our little town of Essex to have our first full-time female officer, and it couldn't be for a more deserving person. So I have the pleasure of entertaining a motion to appoint Megan Watson as a full-time police officer for the town of Essex contingent upon the requirements of the Board of Selectmen, the town of Essex, and the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And to Anne Marie and Mark, thank you for being here and sharing your lovely daughter with us. And Teresa, Teresa Manning, her grandmother, we're very proud of her, and I'm sure you are as well. And to Sergeant Billy Boudreaux, thank you. She's a fine young lady, and we're so pleased to have her.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Have a great night.
Megan, you can use the elevator, and you can text us if you need us to get you out. Thank you all. Have a great night.
What requirements do we have?
Drug and physical.
Drug, medical. Yeah, okay. I didn't realize that was a Board of Selectmen report.
For all new.
Because we're the personnel board.
Oh, okay. Right, right, right.
All new personnel, yeah.
Okay.
Um, why don't I just continue, because then we'll just go to your report. So, we received the information back from the ABCC for the Vita Bella Restaurant, so I will entertain a motion to transfer all annual, annual all alcohol license approved by the ABCC for the Vita Bella Restaurante, Susan Warwick, 109 Eastern Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion for the one-day wine and malt licenses as listed below on pages two and three.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to appoint Ginger Driscoll to the Board of Registros for a partial three-year term ending 6/30/26.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will entertain a motion to appoint Nancy Frieden to the Council on Aging for a partial three-year term ending 6/30/26.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a reminder that the next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, August 21st, 2023, at 6:00 PM here, third-floor auditorium of the Town Hall. We are gonna now go over to...
Can I just ask you, before we move on, so the registrants, are we all set now? Are we, do we have the number we need for...
I'm sorry, for what, Elva?
For the, what we just approved for the registrars?
We, she is replacing Vicky Cataldo.
Okay.
I don't know if she has a complete list. I know she sent us an email asking us if we knew anybody to please let her know. I don't know if she's complete.
I don't know of anybody. I just wanted to see if we were...
Full.
Full.
I'll, I'll get that update for you.
Getting close to November.
Yes, and Marie was looking, and she was, she had been working with Pamela Thorne for any other people that she had in her treasure chest that she could reach out to, so I don't know where Marie is right now. She needs somebody else? Okay, so if we know anybody, please ask. And we're gonna move over to Town Administrator Zubricky's report.
So the first item has to do with the request for proposals that the board had started to work on with me. I have now incorporated in there, in the attachment at the end, the various enrichment programs that the board was interested in. And so that starts on page 19, and that's, that's all in there in the format that the board approved, and we added a couple of things that, that we think local contractors, including the YMCA, which will likely make an application, can support. So now we need to move to making sure that the board is aware of what options are being offered and what the minimum, the maximum pricing would be. So if you look at page three, remember, it was 10 years ago when this contract was last put together. Prices have risen sharply, and so now we're looking for an eight-week resident program fee not to exceed $2,000 and a four-week not to exceed $1,000.
I see that as going up four times, and I know that there are a lot of families that have more than one kid in the program, and it becomes, you know...
Well, what, what can be handled there is the YMCA offers financial aid to everyone, and they will take that under consideration. That's how they would, if, if it ends up being them. I don't know about other contractors.
Yeah. It seems like it's a pretty steep increase for families that, you know, have even one child in the, the program, and it goes from being a good deal to, you know, probably competitive.
That's exactly what I wrote, significant cost increase.
Yeah. What...
I mean, do you have an idea of what you think would be affordable?
I'm thinking that doubling might be more in line, and it, you know, I don't know what it costs, you know, for them.
So should we do that first? Should we look to see what camps, why his camps in a lot of places?
Yeah, I can, I can absolutely look it up.
I just feel, you know, I, I don't, I like the fact that they do, do financial aid, but you don't know.
Okay, I can, and we have, the reason, one of the reasons we're doing this so early is so that we can work through every issue and not have to rush at it. So I will survey, whether it's the YMCA or other youth camps, and understand what the pricing is.
Yeah, I mean, I feel, you know, the camp takes away the use of that for a lot of residents.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think people feel better about that if they know that the people that are using it get a good deal, and it really is discounted and something that they can get behind, you know, for their loss of, of resource. So, yeah, it'd be nice to see if we could get it down to 1,000 or something like that.
Okay.
You know, and maybe we'd have to increase it over time, but...
Well, we, I can definitely get the, the data. And as far as, the, the camp has traditionally offered a full-day program and a half-day program, but there are less and less people involved in the half-day program. And one of the things I understand is, from YMCA, is it's hard enough these days to actually get staff to put together the full-day program. A half-day program causes a bit of an issue because they have to staff up for the whole group, and then kids leave, and then what are those?
Yeah.
They can't get counselors, because the counselors say, well, if you're gonna tell me that I have to leave early, then I'd rather go to a job that pays me all day. This is what they've been finding.
And I, and I think that makes sense, because I think that most people are using a full day anyway now.
That's definitely true. So are you okay with it not offering the half-day program anymore? I mean, some people are going to have an issue with that, but...
I think some are gonna have an issue with that, because I know that I've heard parents over the years...
Yep.
Like to have their kid come home earlier so that...
They can.
Which they can, but they're not...
They just still have to pay for the home.
Right, that's right.
But if, but if we make it still a decent deal, then it's, it's much more palatable.
Trade-off, yeah.
Yeah, and, but it's gonna be palatable to whoever comes in and does the service.
Yeah, oh yeah, for sure.
That's right, okay.
My, my question before we leave that, I only had the two comments. One was gonna be about the significant cost increase, and the second was about the Grove closure. So we know that we've had pushback about the fact that the Grove is unavailable from 9:00 to 1:00 with the half-day program. My, I would assume that this means that the Grove will be unavailable now from 9:00 to 4:00.
Not, not correct. Most of the kids go from 9:00 to 4:00 even now, even today.
Yes, I know that.
But what, what they do is, the YMCA moves the kids to a different area that is not something that the public is looking to actually use. Most of the time, it's, in the summer, it's the beach area that the public wants to come to. And that has not been a problem. They've been, opened the Grove at 1:00 for years now, and it's, it's not an issue.
It's not an issue, okay. Fabulous.
Yeah, it works pretty well, I think.
It's, it's from 9:00 to 1:00, in order for the kids to get a robust camp experience, the whole Grove is closed. But then at 1:00, the areas where the public really wants to go are not, are not hindered in any way.
Okay, perfect. And then we talked about, and I know you captured it in here, because I read it, about an annual review, just in case the enrichment programs are overtaking a town-owned, you know, kind of treasure, and we're not able to have access down there. So those are important things.
Yep, you try it for a year, and you gotta let them play that out, but then you reassess.
Perfect.
So I'll keep looking at it. Next time, I'll bring back the, the information on the survey that I'm gonna do. All right, the next item is simply an authorization form with respect to how the state revolving loan fund has to be managed on a day-to-day basis. And in order for me to process pay applications, the folks who run that program need a letter from the board. It would say that the Essex Board of Selectmen voted to authorize Town Administrator Brendan Zubricky to sign for the owner, that being the town, and any and all paperwork related to the routine pay requisition process and routine state revolving loan fund reimbursement process for the Essex Water Filtration Plant renovation work being conducted by Waterline Industries Corporation and for the projects associated SRF funding.
We certainly trust you, Brendan.
We do trust you, so I'll...
We did the same thing with the sewer, so...
I will entertain a motion to have the board sign the letter of authorization for Town Administrator Zubricky to sign off on all routine payments and reimbursement requests.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And next, we'll go back to our standing item, the review of the topics for the Fall Town Meeting. Before we get into specifics, I think there's some additional information here that I want. So one of the things that came up as far as overdue bills is... I think I've had one so far.
Is that the unpaid, the IT?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so just realize that we do have at least one overdue bill, and Town of Denver's will obviously wait for that. They understand the process. I wanted to mention that we're paying the state revolving loan fund on council fee of $5,800 out of the short, the short-term interest account, which is in the treasurer's budget. That money needs to be replenished, and I believe that we'll be able to ask for the water enterprise fund free cash to reimburse that account. We had to have something to, to pay for it. That way, the treasurer's account is, is back at full, full strength. So that's, I put that on the list. Let's see, in the past, I think I gave you more information about what a short-term rental is and how that's defined. You now have the fire department update. Elva, I know that you were looking for that. Was that satisfactory?
Yeah, yeah. I, he, I ran into him, and he asked me to come in to look at some of the equipment and talk to him, so I may end up doing that. Not, not that I'm against it, I'm not at all. It's more the presenting it to the public so that they don't ask that question, why do we need a ladder truck type of question?
Yep. Also...
Let me know when that meeting might happen, and maybe I'll join you if I can.
Sure, sure.
You guys can have a private tour and go over there anytime you want to. We can get you in.
He told me, he's like, you got my number. I don't know, I was gonna get it from you.
But Peter, I know you have a tough schedule. If you want to get in there, even if it's in the evening, we can get you in there. We'll see all the equipment.
I'll try to make it work, you know.
The board briefly started to discuss whether or not it would be favorable idea to sell a couple of parcels on Robins Island that are currently still leased to owners across the street, and I don't know if there's any more discussion on that. There is not an awful lot of revenue coming in, and I think we provided you with that at the last meeting.
The only thing we were waiting on that, Beezy, was a market analysis of the value of the properties.
Yep, and so we got a cost for you on that, which was $6,500. So the question is, for the pair, so the question is, yeah, yeah. But the question is whether or not you want to spend that, and, and where would we get the money from? We have, I mean, is that something you want to do? Do you want to get the market analysis done? Do you want to go to town meeting and get the money to do?
$6,000 for a market analysis?
Well, Realtors do that.
It's an appraisal. It's a straight-up appraisal. It's not just a market analysis. We are, after we went through the litigation, it was made very clear that we need a professional appraisal done, and it's what's called a self-contained appraisal. It's not just an opinion of value. The appraiser that did all the appraisal work when we sold the southern area, the central area, and, and Robins Island, would be the same person, and they gave us the quote of $6,500 for two more.
I feel like it's impossible to sell a piece of land if you don't have an appraisal done. I also...
We're required to.
We're required to, but I would also assume that we can recover those costs when we ask whatever we're gonna ask for those two pieces of property.
Yep, you can fold that in, and right now, since we have special legislation, you could first offer it to the people who are currently leaseholders.
Right.
We have a special ability to do that.
Yeah.
And you could work out the terms of an agreement. So the question is, do you want us to try to go and find the money to have the, the appraisals done, or do you want to ask town meeting whether the town wants to fund...
Appraisal.
The appraisal, and then come back in the, in the spring with a vote to, a vote to potentially sell.
So, and what you're saying is the lease on those properties are minimal, so we're not really getting much money for them, is that correct?
That's right. And they were put aside only because it, it was at the time that we finalized the subdivision for Robins Island and Central Canomo Point, we didn't know whether there'd be a big interest in one piece of land that the town has on Robins Island that gets you out to the, to the marsh. We've heard nothing on it. There's no, been no outcry for extra parking on Robins Island, because if you park on Robins Island, you have to walk all the way back on the road and go wherever you're going on Canomo Point. So it was done out of an abundance of caution, but unless you have heard from constituents that it's a, you know, something that people are looking for, and I think, Ruth, you mentioned that even if those structures were demolished, what is the town really gonna do there? I mean, you might get away with a gravel lot, certainly not gonna be paid.
And how many square feet are we talking? Do we know?
I can look it up for you.
And I'm only, I'm trying to figure out in my head.
No.
Not very big.
Today, we may not be able to do anything with it. That doesn't mean in 20 years from now, tiny houses come into effect, and now we can do something with it.
But if you were to do a tiny house, you would need a tight tank.
Right.
And they don't...
I would say there's no property out there to put a tight tank in.
You can't use a tight tank for new construction, and it's not a habitable property right now. They're just outbuildings.
Is there any reason why we should get rid of it? Doesn't sound like we're gonna get revenue to make it worthwhile.
That's my other thought.
So...
Why pay $6,000 if we're only gonna get back $7,000?
Is there a liability? Is there any, any reason we should, shouldn't own it?
I mean, so right now, we were getting...
We were asked by the people who currently lease it whether you would sell it. That's the only reason we're talking about it. You could say, no.
Yeah.
So if I owned it, I would say to them, and what are you willing to pay?
Yeah.
Will you pay for the appraisal?
Yeah, will you pay for the appraisal? How about that?
That's a great, that's great.
And, and with, with a written understanding that you might say no.
Right.
But if they want to move into this territory, why should it be on you? And I think that's... So do you want me to ask them about that? There's two people involved.
I think it's worth it. So, Elva, the cost, the, the rent that we're getting, I think it was $125...
A year?
Quarterly, was it?
We have it right here.
Quarterly.
Five hundred bucks.
Yeah, it's, oh, it's, okay, so here we go. In 2021, we got $446, in '22, $475, in '23, $505.
But here's the thing, we're not plowing it, we're not putting water out there. We shut the water off in, in the, in the, in the fall, do we not?
Well, these little outbuildings don't have water. These are...
And, and I get that, that, what I'm just saying is, it's not costing us anything to have these two parcels of land. And we don't know what land is gonna be worth tomorrow. And I'm not talking just the money-wise. I mean, we may need a, we may have some out there in 10 years from now. Now what do we do? We have no places to put anything. That's, I just...
Sure. So I guess my, if you go out there and you see these two areas, I'm, I'm not arguing for or against, if you see these two areas, they are kind of long, skinny, they're not even garages, they're just kind of storage buildings that are falling into disrepair, so they want to renovate them, not for living quarters, they just want to renovate them to keep their, you know, their items dry, storage. If we sold them, we would get whatever revenue comes from selling them, and then you would receive the taxes for a improved building, so there would be, you know, a new growth aspect to that that would bring in tax dollars instead of the lease value, which may or may not be equivalent to what we're getting annually at this point. So my recommendation is, I mean, I like the idea of having them pay for an appraisal, that's great. I also would say we should go out and do a site visit. I've been out there, I've walked around it. What you can see when you look at the GIS is that the actual building that sits on these two parcels truly is almost the entire footprint of the property. It wouldn't meet a single setback.
I've been out to the site as well.
Yeah, it's...
I didn't realize that was just the property.
It's just the property. If you go walk between the two buildings, there's, you know, five feet of actual land between the two, and they own right to the center. We own it all, but...
Maybe the concern would be liability as those buildings continue to decay, you know, then we have a liability issue. So maybe it's worth getting rid of them for that reason, you know?
Well, they own the building, right? So we just own the land that it's on.
Oh, not necessarily.
Oh, those ones?
They don't necessarily own the building, because there's only two conditions. Either at the end of the lease, if a building is not permanently affixed, their sole remedy is to take it with them.
With them.
And if it is permanently fixed at the end of the lease, the town owns it. And we haven't seen, except for one case, where somebody...
Moved it.
Moved a house, so, and I don't think you could move those, they would just...
They would just crumble.
Right. So for all intents and purposes, the town owns it.
Owns it, okay.
So do you want me to approach these people to see if you could get at least what the value is, if they'll pay for the appraisals?
Yeah.
Is that good?
Sure.
All right, we'll find out. Then, also in bold, as the police chief said at the department heads' meeting, possible purchase of a new police cruiser. I don't know if the board had any questions or comments. Do you need more information from the chief? Do you need mileage? Do you need a breakdown like the fire trucks, Elva? Do you need a breakdown like the fire trucks, Elva?
I think like with anything, if we're going to ask for a new police cruiser, we should be saying, here's the age, here's how many miles, you know, here's why we feel we need. It's just, again, transparency so that people understand that we're not trying to get a new police cruiser so that the chief can have a brand-new car to drive in, type of thing.
Well, I have a different outlook on this. One of my concerns is that when you attend the FinCon meetings, you'll listen to the budget season and you hear about the cost of fuel and so on and so forth. And a few years back, when we were going out to purchase the two new Dodge Durangos, we had an old Ford Explorer. And we were only going to get about $5,000 as trade-in value for the vehicle. And initially, all along the process, we thought that we were going to trade in the Ford Explorer and we were going to get two Dodge Durangos, which would leave us the two Dodges, the pickup truck, and the chief's car. And then kind of at the 11th hour, the chief said, well, the Dodge, the Ford Explorer is actually in pretty good shape. They're only willing to give us $5,000. Why don't we keep it as an out-of-town car? So if we have to go to the police academy, we can beat it up. If we have one of our cruisers out for repairs, we have a backup. So we thought, oh, that's not a bad idea. It's in great shape. We might as well keep it. It'd be silly to get rid of it. But then at the very next town meeting, it was used as a trade-in for a brand-new Dodge Durango, which brought us to three brand-new vehicles. I guess my position is, we have a police department that runs a two-man shift. The chief has his own car, and then you're supposed to have two officers on each shift. And we have five vehicles. So the math just doesn't work. And then when you look at the repairs that we do and the fuel that we're paying for and things like that, I was more under the impression of eliminating a vehicle and not necessarily replacing or adding. So that was, my feeling is that as a cruiser was hitting its useful life, maybe we don't replace it instead of replacing.
So right now, we have how many?
So we have five vehicles. We have the chief's car, which, when the chief's, you know, when the chief is no longer employed with the town, I was going to recommend to the board that we don't consider doing a chief's car. I don't think that having a town of 3,600 people and having a chief needing his own vehicle is necessary. And then we have the three Dodge Durangos, which one is a supervisor car and two are just patrol vehicles. And then we have the Dodge Ram pickup truck, which I believe was originally got on a grant. And that was not initially for the police department. It was, well, it was, but it wasn't. So we got the pickup truck on a grant for the Harbor Master because the Harbor Master Division used to fall under the police department, and it was because we needed to be able to trailer boats. We no longer do that. That pickup truck is used solely by the police department, and all of the boat trailering is done by DPW vehicles. So there's, you know, I assumed that the vehicle that they were going to be looking to trade was going to be the Dodge Ram pickup truck, and I was going to recommend that we don't replace it because it was truly for Harbor Master, which no longer falls under police, it falls under the Board of Selectmen. So the natural, you know, kind of transition for me was Harbor Master's no longer there, that vehicle no longer needs to be there.
Yeah.
And that would still leave them with three line cars for a two-man crew.
Yeah.
So I just want to say, as far as I remember, when we were hiring, I don't know, some police chief for some replacement, way back when, when I first started, it was one of those givens. Police chief all over the state, they get a vehicle. Is that still the case? Because that will still be.
Certainly some towns. It's very common, but it is not a requirement. And it's not really on the table now because right now, it's in the contract of the chief police.
Sure. No, I understand that. And I'm not suggesting that we take it away. I'm suggesting that it's an added expense to the town, and if we're.
And I don't disagree. I just, I'm just saying, what I remember from historically, because I said the same thing, just because somebody else does it doesn't mean everybody has to do it, but.
Well, that's always my point.
It was 15 years ago.
Yeah.
I mean, what is the purpose of it? I mean, for meetings and those types of things?
Well, it's, it's.
More administrative stuff?
No, to be able to respond from anywhere at any time.
Yeah.
Whether that's coming from home in the middle of the night, or perhaps they're out at a meeting and they need to get back here because there's something bad and they turn on the lights and go.
Yeah.
So that's the suggestion of probably the, you know, mass chiefs of police would say that's the reason that you need it.
Yeah.
It's up to the board as to whether, and right now, it's, again, it's not on the table, but when you come up to your next contract with a chief of police, you may want to ask more questions about it.
Well, and I would also argue that if you have three line cars with a two-man crew, you have a third vehicle for the chief to be able to drive when he needs to go to a meeting, that he's, you know.
Yes. And it also makes it easier for the next round with a new chief that we don't have a car. You've got to go to town meeting if you want it, and then that makes it that much more difficult.
So, but the only problem I see with that is if, yes, you have three line cars, blah, blah, blah. But at any given time, any one of those cars could be in shop.
Sure. Which leaves you the two.
Which leaves you the two. That would be my comment.
Okay. So at this point, though, with respect to the request for replacement of a cruiser, do you want the justification like was done with the fire department and the rundown?
Yes.
Okay.
Tell me, when a cruiser is replaced, is the equipment in it too outdated to transfer older?
A lot of the time, it is, or it's not compatible with the wiring harness of the new one.
Yeah.
But there are things that are, you know, for instance, radios get updated all the time.
Yeah.
And most of the time, the radio is current with, you know, it can be put in a new. Did you have any other questions or comments on the list as of now?
I do not.
All right.
I would also leave that on tier two for the time being.
Yep. It's on two. And then finally, the Village Restaurant is either, has been sold or it's imminently going to be sold. The new owners are in favor of continuing a relationship with the town whereby the town gets a license from the property owner that at the top of the stairs that come out of the municipal parking lot, people can walk back and forth to the street or to the Village Restaurant or whatever. And the property owner gets a license from the town because there's a very small piece of town property that's part of their side parking lot that runs up the side of the building. We have had this arrangement in place now for two owners running, and the new owners are, through their attorney, saying that they want to continue that relationship. So I'm asking if the board wants to authorize the signature of successor documents for both of those licenses outside of a meeting at the appropriate time.
So I will entertain a motion to vote to sign a successor pedestrian passage and dumpster parking license outside of a meeting when the new property owner, with the new property owner, as soon as the documents become available.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So Brendan, before you leave your report, I wasn't at the last meeting. Can you talk about the owner-unknown parcel of Southern Avenue?
Just finish this vote. Do you want to say aye?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. And aye. So that was unanimous on the Village license. Okay. Parcel unknown.
So the challenge there was, if we were going to bring it to a law firm to do the title work, we were told that it could cost as much as $100,000, and at the end of that, they still would not know whether, have found the owners, possibly. So a suggestion came up through the Economic Development Committee to find someone who's well-versed in title work, but is not necessarily an attorney making hundreds of dollars an hour. We found a very seasoned title person, Brian Barbry, who's well-known in the field, and he's willing to do work at $30 per hour. The board authorized $1,000 from the legal fund for some initial work, at the end of which Brian will report back and say, here's the long view, you know, is this going to take another three years? Is it another three months?
Yeah.
He said that he knew a lot about the genealogy already, and if you can verify either through death certificates or even headstones, believe it or not, which he has seen some of, he's very much into this, that certain heirs have deceased and there's no other document on file, you start closing a lot of the, closing off a lot of the things that are loose ends.
Yeah.
And so the board decided to try with $1,000 to see if we could get a better idea of what this is going to take.